I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Farmington School Board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome back. We were last here two weeks ago to talk through the works for a work session and most of the items on the agenda tonight are really action and updates on those issues that we spoke of at that time. First item on our agenda as always is approval of the agenda that was posted on Wednesday last week. Are there any questions or items to add or discuss? Seeing none, can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda, second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Dewildee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. No. We have an agenda. It just dawned on me the other day that I seldom ask if there's any opposed because I tend to hear everything, but it's kind of out of order at the same time not to ask. Anyway.
Positive intent.
Positive intent. Anyway, our first item on the agenda after the intro is good news from Superintendent Berg. Take it away.
Thank you Chair Christensen, members of the board and members of the community. So I'm going to start off by recognizing the school board. It is, it is School Board Recognition Month. And in Minnesota in February, we try to take time and thank the board, which is really, for the most part, thankless job. So we truly appreciate the amount of time and energy that you are putting in and your dedication to the service. I know the new school programmers are just getting a little bit of a feel for that, but the amount of time that people put in for the amount of things they get is not always correlated. But I know that our, our, our leadership team and myself truly appreciate all the support and work that the school board does to ensure that we're able to do the things that we need to do to support the kids in our district. So thank you and happy School Board Recognition Month. Our winter sports season is winding down, so we, we get to that point of time where seasons end and state tournaments are going on. So our gymnastics team was fortunate enough to have three participants at the state tournament over the weekend. They finished third in the section as a team. Emerson Markin competed in the beam and finished 27th. Mason Hins competed in the floor and finished 35th, but she won the section meet, which is super cool. And then Kinsley Taylor was on the bar and she finished eighth. Our wrestlers, they are entering their section as well. They finished second at the section 2A meet two weeks ago. Unfortunately, only one team qualifies. That was Apple Valley. They had their individual tournament this weekend. I believe it was at Lakeville North and four wrestlers are heading to the state tournament this weekend. It's Davis Paro, Eden Davis, Cole Hand Lindmeyer and Dylan Hendrickson. And then the boys swim and dive team, sorry Kennedy, they competed and they finished their season this weekend down in Rochester at the section tournament. He's still a little saddened by the loss, so I'm going to take that one for him. Maybe in the future we can give him an update on the whole team. The boys hockey team lost to Lakeville South last week and the girls hockey team also lost to Northfield in the first round of the sections. Girls basketball team plays Wednesday down at Rochester Century and the boys are finishing up their season. There's some other cool things that go on this time of year. The 10th Annual Cabaret was at Bachman Middle School. For those of you that haven't had an opportunity to do that, it is a super cool opportunity for some of our learners to step out of kind of traditional roles in choir and music and really choose their own thing and really display who they are as musicians. And it's a, it's a really cool event. If you didn't have a chance this year, make sure you look for the 11th Annual next year because it is well worth the time that's spent. And they typically have an afternoon and a morning session. The speech team from FHS hosted their home meet on February 18th. We had over 350 participants. And if you've never been at a speech invite or meet, you need to go and just watch the kids not compete, but as they prepare. They talk to anything. They'll talk to lockers, they'll talk to walls, they'll talk to all sorts of things. It's a, it's a really, really cool event. Our rogue robotics team got a really cool shout out in the U.S. Congressional Forum a couple of weeks ago. Representative Angie Craig gave them a specific shout out regarding their mobility projects that they've been engaged in in the last few years. And this was based off a follow-up story that Carol Lamb ran to Boyd Hubert, which he ran one a couple of years ago. And they are also heading to regionals this weekend in Duluth. The Bachman Lego Legends Team competing in the state meet, if you remember, a couple updates ago, we talked about them qualifying and they didn't place, but they exceeded their high score. So nothing like peaking at the end of the season. The BMS staff, learners and community did a really interesting thing this weekend. They participated in the Polar Plunge on Saturday, which raised money for Special Olympics. I know in talking to Principal Sage, he was a little bit down on the temperature drop. I told him to make sure when he jumps in, hold his breath because that reflexes to breathe in and luckily nobody drowned and everybody survived. It looked like they had a great time and they had quite a group there. I think it was three waves that went in and jumped into the lake.
Thanks for leading with the nobody died.
Yeah, it's key to that, which is good. So North Trail had their random acts of kindness and service projects the week of 13th through the 20th, so really focused on how can we do things better for kids and how can we take those little things to make things better each day? I had an opportunity to stop by the Metal View Wax Museum on February 14th. So a really cool opportunity for students to do some research on an historical figure and then not only talk about what they did, but what was the impact they had. And so you walk around and you hit little buttons and they share their stuff. They get all dressed up. It's a really, really cool event. FES had their readathon last Thursday. On Saturday, another really cool thing at FHS, the FFA is in the process of creating their alumni association. So some people in our community don't know this, but we still have a strong FFA group in our high school that still goes out and competes and is very active. And Julie Ketterling, who supports that group, kind of taken upon herself to, to, to grab and get people together and begin that group of alumni to further kind of tie the bonds of those groups. So that 25 people at that first inferational session. Then just kind of thinking ahead, we're getting into that time of year where we have conferences and Dodge and Bachman are going to do something a little bit different. So on March 9th, they're actually going to each do a celebration of learning. So instead of just having families come in and sit down and talk to teachers, there's going to be different artifacts of learning displayed throughout the building and they're inviting people to come in with their learns to take a look at those and kind of celebrate that. So Dodge is doing that from 4:15 to 7:15 and Bachman's going to be from 5 to 7. So really a cool opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of the kids that they've done this year and take a look at those different learning experiences. And then last but not least, a quick legislative update. The February forecast came out today. The good news is they added in, well, the potentially bad news is they added in inflation into the expenditure. The good news is the surplus didn't change, so it really had no impact. So it still remains to be about $17.6 billion, which is good news. It should add some stability and allow legislators to do some, legislators to do some things they need to do, especially around school funding. Bills are being introduced at a record pace. Unfortunately, there hasn't been no major movement on any education funding, which means we're probably not going to see that until May. So we'll just do the best we can with the information we have until then and keep pushing because we know when they want to pass bills, they can get passed. This just isn't one of those at this point in time. So a lot of stuff, a lot of cool things going on. So that is going to end the good news and superintendent update.
Well, that is a lot of good news. Thank you. Bring it over to the student representatives. Emma, do you want to lead us off?
Yes, I'll start us off with Farmington High School. So Farmington hosts an annual college fair every year and it's available for high school students to be exposed to colleges in Minnesota and even out of state colleges. However, Farmington's was canceled last week due to weather. Fortunately though, Lakeville South is also holding a college fair and Farmington students are available to go to that fair as well. If you previously registered for Farmington, there is, your registration will still be viable and if you haven't, you can sign up on Schoology or at wwwstrivefair.com. And by signing up, you get a barcode on your phone or whatever device you use and the college representatives at whatever booth can scan that and you will be sent information and that just eliminates the need for information cards. And then this is a great opportunity for all high school students and it is highly encouraged among juniors and sophomores who are looking into post-secondary decisions. Visit with representatives from as many as 100 colleges, universities, community colleges, technical colleges and specialty schools from around the country. Applications for PSEO are also coming up, so if you are a student interested in taking post-secondary courses in high school, this is another great way to find where you want to take those courses. And the event actually takes place tomorrow, the 28th at Lakeville South, 6 o'clock to 7 p.m. So don't hesitate to register. Also at the high school, dance tryouts are upcoming. They take place March 7th to 8th and registration is open until March 1st. As far as other things going on at high school, there is an opportunity. The athletic office is looking for students who are interested in using their skills to promote FHS athletics. The marketing position is a great opportunity for anybody interested in sports photography, journalism, sports statistics or graphic design. And if you're interested, stop by to see Mr. Badger. And then just to reflect on what's been going on at, at FHS and in our community, we just had our winter carnival as part of winter week. And FHS hosted a community outreach event through student council. The winter carnival, which was open to all students and non-students in the Farmington community, had a fantastic turnout. There were plenty of people there. There were an abundance of games for young children with a ticket and prize system, so that was super fun. There were FHS clubs there advertising and sharing their presence in the community and we had a multitude of local vendors and I myself thoroughly enjoyed the cookie dough from Cookie Dough Bliss. Overall, the event was very successful as part of our winter week and I'll hand it over to Kennedy.
Yeah, so another part of our winter week celebration that we had at the beginning of the month was our new teacher royalty fundraiser. So all throughout the week prior, bins were set out on the third floor office for students to put in coins for this teacher that they wanted to be chosen as teacher royalty, or they could put in money as in dollar bills for the ones that they didn't want to win. The winners would be piled at the pep fest that we had on that Friday. The top two winners were selected two days before the crowning with the most positive money. The winners for the teacher royalty program were Mrs. Elizabeth Beckman, who raised $59.42 of positive points, and Mr. Bradley Mariska, who raised a positive total of $117.56. One student donated a huge bag of just all of their coins and then another mason jar, so they really wanted Mr. Mariska to win. This fundraiser raised a total of $346 for pennies for patients. So great job FHS and everyone who contributed. And then I'll add a little bit more about cabaret. So this Saturday was their 10th annual cabaret performance. It was packed for both of the showings. There was many different musical groups ranging from those solos, duos, entire choirs and the band backing up many of these performances. It was a very intense musical night and the closer was really awesome that kind of brought everyone together. There was also a performing group that was incredibly talented that consisted of 4th through 6th graders called Triple C. They sang a piece from Frozen as well as sang another song with the high school choir. It was super fun to watch these little kais sing with the high schoolers. Cabaret is such an amazing program because it really gives students the opportunity to show their dedication for music and strive for something really big, as well as a safe space for them to get their voice out there and express what they love. Choir wanted to give a huge thank you to the FFC Booster Club, Triple C, and all the volunteers and parents who made cabaret possible. Over the flex day, Farmington National Society had our second blood drive of the school year. Through 94 appointments, NHS collected a total of 74 pints of blood from students and community members. The next blood drive will be held May 11th of 2023. If you are 17 or older or 16 with parental consent and you want to donate blood locally, please sign up for our spring date. Every pint of blood that is collected during these blood drives is counted and all of the numbers will contribute to a scholarship that will be given up, a scholarship fund that will give to a Farmington student in NHS at the end of the school year, which I think is super cool. And then finally, it's Black History Month and FHS is doing a lot to recognize it, such as displays on bulletin boards around our school, segments on Tiger News and trivia. Mondays and Thursdays throughout the month, staff members post trivia on Schoology and the winners are announced every Tuesday and Friday respectively and are able to pick up their prize. The last question on Schoology went out today, so if any FHS students listening would like to participate, now is the chance. Next month, they'll be providing trivia for Women's History Month, so students can keep their eyes peeled for that. And then I wanted to give a huge thanks to a group of students who decided to make a poster in the FHS comments. It's super bright and colorful and in bold it says, "We appreciate you custodians" with a huge heart. Below it, there's a space for many students to sign and echo their appreciation as we truly do appreciate the custodians and everything that they do for our building and keeping it running as smoothly as it can. Many students have already signed it and it's such a great positive piece for the comments. So thank you students for making that poster and thank you custodians for all that you do. We appreciate you. That's all I have.
That's awesome. Hey, Kennedy, is the blood drive open to us too?
Mm-hmm, community members for sure.
Awesome. I will sign up. So thanks, that's awesome. Good to, good to have the update from, from the, from our student representatives. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted upon with one motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be pulled from the consent agenda and it will be acted upon separately. Does anyone have an item they wish to discuss? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Gorman, second by Simmons. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a consent agenda passed. Okay, we'll move on to administrative actions. Our first item under administrative actions is the award contract for Riverview Elementary Carpet Replacement Project. Dan Miller.
All right, good evening Chair Christensen, members of the board, community members. Just here to hopefully kind of wrap up the beginning stages of this project. So as was mentioned, we've talked about the Riverview Carpet Flooring Project here a number of times. We did have bid opening on Tuesday of last week and had five bidders that showed up at the high school, either in person or submitted their bids. I will call out, and it's also listed here on our letter, I've had something that has never happened before, which is we had two bidders and this happened to two people during the same bid that actually delivered their bids to the wrong address. So they, we always do all of our bid opening and all of our publication stuff at the, at the high school and the district office area and for whatever reason, they dropped them off at Riverview. So unfortunately, kind of for them, they weren't able to be considered. Those bids remained unopened and were discounted, so, and they were notified of that. On a positive note, our bids came in quite good. There was quite a range. If we look at, this is the bid tabulation sheet. So we were very happy with that low bid based also because of the, the actual value on that bid as well as the, the company in and of itself. Reputable company, good experience with them, highly recommended. So we were very pleased with that, to be quite honest. So below what we had estimated in our construction aspect by a pretty significant dollar figure. So that's, we were very pleased, very, very pleased with that. So that doesn't always happen and so it did this time around. So as, as you can see in the, the letter from our architects, we are requesting the board to allow us to move forward with awarding the contract to St. Paul Linoleum and Carpet Company out of Eagan for both the base bid as well as the, the alternate bid there for a total of $505,275. And as previously mentioned, this, that amount would be spread out over the course of three different fiscal years, being this fiscal year next and then wrapping up in August, the July-August timeframe of the following year. So being two, two different phases. So be happy to take any questions that folks have, otherwise I believe that you have a motion.
Are there any questions? All right, I know we talked about this in pretty good detail a couple of weeks ago, so thanks for coming back to the board and with successful bids. Can I get a motion?
I move to award the contract for the Riverview Elementary Carpet Replacement Project to St. Paul Linoleum and Carpet Company in the amount of 505...
505,275. Cat gets my tongue sometimes too. Motion by Dewildee, second by Gorman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Our next item is the approval of 2023-2024 budget assumptions and parameters. Superintendent Berg?
Thank you Chair Christensen, members of the board. So again, this is a discussion, a pretty lengthy discussion that we've had for quite a long time, but formalized or kind of got a formalized direction from the board after the work session at our last meeting, February 13th maybe, yeah, whenever the last meeting was. So we're bringing back the more formalized stuff and so I'll just walk you through some of the, the main points. So we're going to leave our enrollment or consistence from last year to this year, so 67/25. We did a pretty robust study with Teamworks International that again shared our birth rate declining, but that should be offset by the housing development. We know that it's, it's slowed down a little bit, but we still, you feel this is conservative based on where things are and what we're doing like that. So we feel good about that. Number two is kind of the big topic of discussion that we had at the last meeting. What did we want to use for per pupil formula increase and then what was going to happen with special ed cross subsidy? So the board gave us direction to go 3% next year, 2% following year. If you remember, the governor's proposal was 4% and 2%. Then there are some bills out there that are five and five, so three and two, fairly conservative. And then 50% increase in our special ed cross subsidy funding or buying down that special ed cross subsidy by half. Again, that, that's in the governor's proposal, but there's other bills out there that are, you know, much more significant, anywhere from 75 to 100%. So we feel like it, this will probably be closer to the floor than it will be the ceiling. Just to call out for number three, compensatory, we did share this with the board with the new way of certifying our free and reduced and families that receive educational benefits through the electronic means. We actually saw an increase in our compensatory revenue that we, we put into the modeling of about $1 million, a little bit over $1 million. So that already is accounted for. Expenditures basically stay the same. When you get down to the next part where it says the parameters, number two, you'll see that's unchanged. And basically that is continuing with that, basically 75% of where it was in 2021. Those are building supplies. Our buildings have seemed, I mean, clearly if they could have it all back, they'd like it all back, but they've seemed to adjust it and be able to get what they need to get through that time. Co-curricular, same thing, that supplies for our activities and athletics, that's 75% of where it was in 2021. And then number five is kind of that discretionary funding that we give and dedicate to each building. That was reduced by 25% too, so that's remaining at that 75% of where it was in 2021. And then when you get to number six, in, in talking to our different programs, you know, getting behind in capital can be problematic, not just for programs, but for buildings. You know, not replacing desks, not replacing tables, not replacing some technology and things like that. You get too far behind that and it's really hard to, to make up and I think we were at that point. So we are recommending that we put that back in and reinstate it back to the funding that it was in 2021. If you remember, that was a 50% reduction. That increases, you know, things by $62,000 and we feel like in our process, we can cover that through the reductions that we've already talked about. It's, it's a small amount, but I think it'll pay a, a big piece moving forward. The class size parameters are unchanged for last year and actually what had been in board policy, if you remember, up until last year, we were fortunate enough to have money from our 2015 levy where we actually won below since 2015. So last year brought us back into alignment and then the board made the decision to kind of buy that reduction back, which potentially could be $1 million out of the assigned fund balance to leave that where that is. Number 10, we did want to add in and set aside 2FT for multilingual. We shared with the board that, 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 that group within our district continues to grow and we anticipate that will continue to grow. And we want to be able to be forward-thinking about hiring, hiring staff. It's pretty unique and pretty specialized staff and trying to add that on the back end sometimes gets problematic. You don't get the best people. So again, this is one of those things with the reductions that have already been identified, we can absorb into to get to that net $2 million. And then the retainment personnel to support, oh, I'm sorry, number 12, superintendent reserve. So typically we set aside some reserve that we use for bubbles and things like that. We're recommending that we start that at zero as part of a reduction. This is one of those things that we typically don't use until the end of July, August anyways. This gives us time to kind of see what happens with the legislature. We could come back and talk to the board about adding that in if things are favorable or we could always get to the point too where we just come back to the board if we have bubbles and we ask the board for the permission to do that or not do that. But right now, this is, these are kind of quote unquote empty FTE because there's, nobody's in these positions yet. They're yet to be hired and so it's a, a little bit softer reduction in terms of the now and then, and we can always backfill later. Retainment of personnel to support our students learning through the use of assigned fund balance, that goes to offset the one point, the plus one staffing ratio, excuse me. The one point, the, the plus one staffing ratio increase. So that kind of goes back with number eight. So in general, those are the things that we talked about with the board last week and gets us to about a $3 million net deficit, which we're, you know, right now planning to use $1 million to offset that so we don't have to use a plus size. And so we're working to identify a net $2 million reduction, which we will bring that discussion to the board at the next work session about how that will take place. That is all I have. I will stand for any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. Can we go back to expenditures? Number six says preserve programs that support district goals and strategies. First time for me to look at this and so I was just wondering if you could give like some specific examples of like programs that you are intending to like, that you would preserve?
Yeah, I think when we went through the, I mean, MinCaps would be a problem or would be an example of that. I think the opportunities we give kids out at DCTC through 917s, those types of, of programs that are kind of above and beyond, which we typically can't do and we partner with other things, would be some examples of those.
Okay, the partnerships, okay, that makes sense.
Well, I mean, fifth grade band would be another example of something like that. So there's lots of those different things, right? I mean, really this kind of calls out that we try to do the best we can when we start to look at how we realign things through our district strategic plan and how do we best support kids in things they're passionate about, excited about and opportunities that we don't necessarily provide. Not that we can always do that when you're looking to reduce, but that's, that's the goal.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for the clarification, that helps a lot.
I don't have any questions. Thanks for the information, just to echo as we continue to try and keep repeating just the impact that the legislature has on our financing process and appreciate all of the work, knowing that this hasn't been, it's a process we go through every year, but it takes a lot of work from the administration and the building teams to think about it and talk through it while there's, you know, always this big question mark about what, what we're waiting for in terms of funding and how it will impact us. So disappointing that that's not moving faster, but thanks for all of your work and the information tonight. It's really helpful.
I do have a question. Under number 11, invest $100,000 to ensure all sites have the same baseline of support for learner, social, emotional and behavioral support. Can you tell me, when we went through this before, I'm not sure where that $100,000 came in, is that, where, where was that when we talked about the parameters before?
That would be, it's not part of the parameters, that would be part of the net reduction when you get to 2 million. So that would be encompassed in the reductions that we have to make to get to 2 million. So not all of our buildings have the same social, emotional support and we want to get to a baseline in all of those buildings.
So can you explain to me like where we're seeing gaps on that?
Some of our, some of our buildings have a behavior interventionist, some don't. Some have, you know, an additional counselor where, I mean, it's just, we need to get to a baseline within that. So we've done some innovative stuff and allowed building to reallocate and use things in different ways. Based on the last couple of years, we want to codify that and get it to all the same sort of support as the sort of support as the bottom line and then begin the process of what does a building need based on the makeup of their student body and stuff, so.
Right, okay. No, no, I just would like, so it's just making sure that like each school has similar programming? I mean, it doesn't have to be identical because the bodies, school.
Might not necessarily be the programming, but at least the same amount of FTE dedicated to student support. And then the building can make the decision around how to best support the social, emotional, behavioral needs within that building. And so do that from an elementary level, we're still working on exactly what that'll look like, but do that in an elementary level, do that at a middle school level, and then the high school, it's its own thing. But so there's at least a starting point to have the discussion. And then off of that, what do buildings maybe need based on the programs that are in their buildings? Because some of our buildings have additional special ed programming that don't, that others don't need. So how do we push in with additional help? Is that general ed? Is that special education help? But at least get to kind of a core floor and work our way up. And that's not, that's not true in all of our buildings right now.
So just so I understand, this is $100,000 that we already have allocated within our budget and we're just reallocating it to?
Most of it, so.
So are we, are we adding, are we looking at possibly adding staff with that $100,000?
Realocating in some instances and potentially adding bits and pieces in different places. But again, it'll come out of when we're all sudden done, it's being incorporated into the idea that we need to have a net $2 million reduction. So if we, if you say, well, okay, you add another $100,000 or you're adding $62,000 for your capital, then your reduction is, you know, to 2.1 million, 2.2 million instead. So when we've talked about it, we've tried to talk about it from a net because there's always that moving part of there's things that we had, like last year, we added, I think when we went through the process, we tried to be forward thoughtful about special ed. And so we built in like 2.5 additional special ed. So the reduction was 2 million. Well, now you got to get to, you know, almost 2.3 million to add that stuff in.
Okay. And like same for the two FTEs for multi learner, I mean, what's the amount per head that we're looking at for those?
It's about $78,000.
Okay. And then are those going to be like floating or are they going to be dedicated to certain sites? Where are we seeing that increase?
Well, that ebbs and flows. And so the increase where it is right now may not necessarily be what it is next year. So the, basically those FTEs will follow the learners.
Do those additional, do those additional FTE positions come through the consent agenda?
Yeah, when they're hired, yeah. Just like all our brother hires.
Okay.
We just don't know when they will be.
Right, okay.
Anything else?
So just still learning.
Good questions. Yeah, anything from this side? All right, yeah. Thanks again, Jason. I know you and the entire administrative team, I mean, we pushed to have a whole lot of information and homework done, starting, what, Q4 last year? And this is the result of it. When I talk to and see what other districts are doing, it's pretty clear that we have numbers and details well ahead and have been able to advocate the big, we've been able to advocate with our legislative leaders around special education funding and others because this work has brought those numbers forward and made that possible. So I just want to express some appreciation too for all that went into this.
And to Melissa's point, you know, we originally started by having to reduce $5 million. So we have a $5 million reduction that is really sitting there. So, you know, when you say, well, it has to be two, well, we need these other things, we already had.
And you can flex the.
So we can get to the net two when we have to add some other things in. It's never just perfect because you're always trying to figure out what you're going to have to add and what you might have to. To be honest with you, we may, two multilingual teachers might be low. We might have to come back probably in August and say we need another one.
What's the percentage we're seeing increasing right now?
Lisa can answer that. I mean, it's hard to say percentage.
I don't know percentage, but I'll say that we projected to have 415 at the start of this year and we're seeing that.
We projected to have 415 at the beginning of this year and we are up to 485. So they are growing at an exponential rate. And so we are currently understaffed and doing our best to be creative with that and support our learners. And so that 2.0 will help cover the understaffing and then hopefully be a projection of what will increase. But if we continue seeing the rate of growth we're seeing.
Only more than two.
We will possibly be back in August to discuss that.
Yeah, and the hard part is, right, this is another one of those cross subsidies because, you know, we talk about the special ed cross subsidy a lot because that has the biggest impact. I mean, our, this sounds bad when you say it, but our multilingual learners don't generate much additional funding. So anything that we do that we should do to support them really comes out of the general fund. You know, you've seen where, I think in the governor's bill, they talked about 25%, you know, buy down of that. Well, I mean, when it's $28 a kid and that's, that's kind of a made up number, it's, I mean, 25% is, that's nothing compared to what we need to invest. And I think it was not, maybe not last two Friday notes ago, like we had the number of languages and things like that. And, you know, that list continues to grow, but then at the same time, you know, some back out and some new ones add in. So that just adds another dimension to it. So we try to do the best we can right now with some of those things, like special education's a really good guess and multilingual is a guess with some of those things to try to figure out, okay, what can we build into the budget to build some cushion? You know, but, you know, with both of those, we typically have to add more anyways at some point in time.
Thank you for that. I'm a numbers person, so that helps me to put it in perspective.
Yep.
Seeing no other questions or comments, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 budget assumptions and parameters as presented.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Dewilde. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion is passed. Our next item on the agenda is approval of a resolution for discontinuing and reducing programs and positions. I believe this is sort of a follow-on authorization that will support next levels of decisions that we'll be talking about in March. Did I steal your thunder?
Yes, you did. That's fine. Good evening, Chair Christensen, members of the board and the community and administration. Yes, this is basically a formality that you are directing the administration now that you've approved the budget parameters to go ahead and start staffing the buildings for next year with our programs. There are parameters you've brought forth a couple, few weeks ago, you approved some changes in course title sort of things. And so it all comes together now and you're giving the administration authorization to implement the parameters for the 2324 budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but there is the resolution before you.
Are there any questions? All right. Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution discontinuing and or reducing programs and positions.
Second.
Motion by Gorman, second by Simmons. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. Thank you, Mary Ann. Our next item on the agenda is policy action. At the work session last, about two weeks ago, we reviewed policies 403, discipline suspension and dismissal of school district employees, policies 413, harassment and violence, policy 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse, and policy 1021 regarding professional conduct for school district employees. There were some discussions in the meantime and some edits have been added particularly to policy 1021. I would open this for discussion, for any, for discussion on any of the other changes we see before us tonight.
I don't have any for policies 403, 413, and 414. So after opening it up to others and hearing their thoughts on that, I wonder though if we could make a separate motion for those to advance and then consider and discuss policy 1021 separately. If others are okay with that.
I'm not sure what order is, but we can do that, right? Sure. So can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Simmons and second by Dewilde to move forward to vote on policies 403, 413, and 414 separately from policy 1021. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we have now sort of added a second item to the agenda, so the next motion would be to vote to approve policies 403, 413, and 414. If there's, can I do, can I get a motion on that?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of passing policies 403, 413, and 414 as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Seeing none, those policies are approved as written. So our next item is to address policy 1021 separately. Is there any discussion?
Okay, well, thanks everyone for your flexibility in being able to pull and talk about this one a little bit more. Just reflecting on our great discussion during the work session and appreciate the continued work from the policy committee to continue thinking about how we can strengthen this policy. Something that really stood with, you know, stood with me after our work session was just Jaclyn's perspective as an educator. It's something that when I came onto the board, one of the things that was really important to me was recognizing the areas or things that I knew more about and acknowledging those that I didn't and being willing to be receptive and really hear from those who live and breathe and do this work every day. And so when she talked about especially components of this, of the policy, particularly Item D, and I know Maggie, you had some really good considerations that you raised during that one too. It just had me wondering how, how this policy can stand without providing more ambiguity or a sense of feeling under a microscope. I'm just very sensitive to the handful of teachers that I've talked to since hearing that perspective to try and better understand just what their day to day looks like and how having an item like this that is kind of specific to teachers because it's curriculum-focused, whereas the rest of the policy broadly is employee as a whole. So you're talking principals and custodians and, you know, food service staff. And it covers everyone, but then Item D in particular really feels a little different than the rest. And the feedback that I got was very similar to what Jaclyn shared, just that in the course of a day, there's, there's just a lot that happens and teachers are already feeling the sense and trying to be really thoughtful and conscientious about what they're teaching and, and recognizing that there are conversations and things that happen in their classroom that feel that they try to maintain, you know, control of, but that there's, there's a limited ability to do that. And so, you know, they had questions for me about if this passes, how does that affect us? I know that there were some opportunities for improvement around striking instructional areas of classrooms and adding language around described in the course syllabus, but their questions for me were, well, does that mean if something changes like quickly, how does this affect me as a teacher? I already have a million things on my mind just to get from day A to day B to day C. So I just share all that to open it up for discussion to the group. This policy is, I think, a really strong policy and something that, as we've talked about and identified in the fall with our board members that were on at that time and have continued with our new ones, that it's something that supports our philosophy and that we as board members, you know, it says employees, but this implies us too as board members. We want to hold ourselves to these standards that I just wonder if the board would consider passing this policy as written with the exclusion of Item D so that it just is a little stronger, provides less ambiguity, feels more supportive of our educators. And then if there are things that we want to talk more about or think about, I think we're going to have a lot of opportunities to do that as a board coming up as we move into the spring and some of the workshops and things that we'll have and moving into the upcoming school year and get going for that. So I'll pause there and just see if others have reactions or reflections. It's not an official motion at this point, but we'll just welcome others' thoughts on, on that item for consideration.
I think that the edits that were made from, you know, through the process, this bill's come forward to this board multiple times. And I think the series of edits have all been helpful in clarification of what the goal of this is. You know, Hannah, I had originally thought that with the edits, you know, potentially we were in a good spirit with it, that this was useful. But, you know, the more I reflect on it, the more I'm, I'm thinking that, I think you're on to something that Section D is probably not a good additional goal of this bill. And if we do want to consider addressing it, it should be done in a separate policy. And I can fully support all the other elements of it, but I do still have some lingering concerns about how Section D specifically would affect our educators.
Thank you. My job as chair is to let everyone else speak first.
So I have spoken, I have spoken to a couple of friends that are teachers in the district. They didn't share the same concerns. In fact, they were on board with Section D and understood kind of where it was directing them and, and we're on, like I said, we're on board with that also in speaking to members of society, you know, our community is who we're representing. And so that's kind of where, you know, I feel even with the changes that I know Maggie and Kyle worked on together, that it's a good representation of where we're really trying to go. I don't, I think with the changes, it doesn't, it doesn't feel to me like it's under a microscope. I'm not an educator, but that's why I reached out and asked that question as well because that's a good question. So, I mean, I just, I got different feedback, so I'm still in favor of the way that it's written now, I think.
It's important to recognize too that items brought up by a student or someone in the classroom participating in discussion isn't necessarily reflective of the instructor. And just, I do feel like the edits do clarify that if it is in the course syllabus, then it is, you know, potentially a controversial topic, but is clearly in the appropriate context of this educational curriculum, then it does welcome discussion and all points of view. I have obviously mixed feelings on this one.
I'd like to add is that especially, I can see how it could kind of create kind of a pigeonhole on that educator and that teacher perspective. And even just experiencing school today and how many teachers are being very flexible with how many days of school we've had to do from home and they're constantly changing things around. They may not be sticking to that same syllabus exactly that they put out beginning of the school year because so many things are different now and they may have to change things around. And so kind of putting that emphasis on the syllabus or maybe it's selective class, they don't have the exact academic standards, then what position are they in after that at that point? That's just kind of what I saw.
Okay. It's kind of me. Yeah, I mean, I guess I read it as we're asking district employees to refrain from interjecting contents or concepts unrelated to their instructional goals. So, you know, I wouldn't say they're straying from the syllabus even on those flex days. But at the same time, I would say that, you know, we're just asking them to kind of, I mean, we're not saying that the learners can't, you know, interject and have organic conversations to Jaclyn's point at our last meeting. We're just saying, you know, we want to stick to kind of what we're supposed to be learning. And I think that's, that should be really what they're doing now anyway. I don't think we're really asking them to do any more than they're already doing. But just having it here to, you know, ease some of the fears that I think some members of community and other teachers may have is, is important.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's perspective, but I, I think like with having that, like just refrain from injecting, interjecting unrelated topics, unrelated to instructional goals, makes it just, you know, that's the thrust of the guideline. Right, some of those topics are part of the curriculum and part of the, you know, and so you want to speak to both sides of that and let the kids speak to both sides of it. But, you know.
I appreciate your guys' perspective. You know, I talked to Kyle about this too because just thinking about the goals that we had around the policy broadly and then especially. then especially this item, and wondering, as it relates to curriculum and kind of the connection and what, you know, what we're hoping to build on, because as Jason answered during the work session, there's already a process in place for, you know, if learners or parents have a concern or feel like this has happened. So there's already a process and a way that it's addressed. But thinking kind of broadly about the curriculum and, you know, what the intention was behind Item D, there are, there are other, I think, things that are happening, like our Instructional Program Review Committee, that's really responsible for our curriculum broadly, that has parents on it, educators, administrators. And I think, Melissa, I really appreciate, one of the things that you talked about, kind of, just that it's, and Jaclyn noted this too, right? We, we believe this is already happening, and that was kind of the sense that I heard too of just, this is, this is already a given, that we shouldn't be doing this as, as educators, you know, whatever our personal ones are. And so, and when we, when I dug into those standards that Kyle had talked a, a lot about and, you know, the starting point that he used for this, for drafting this, and, and looking for ways that we could strengthen, you know, a district-specific policy in this area. I think for me, again, just thinking about that Item D, when you read the standards of effective practice for teachers and particularly Standard One around subject matter, you know, number D, or number, letter D under that says, "Understand that subject matter knowledge is not a fixed body of facts but is complex and ever-developing. E is use multiple representations and explanations of subject matter concepts to capture key ideas and link them. F, use varied viewpoints, theories, ways of knowing, and methods of inquiry in teaching subject matter concepts." And so again, I'm, I'm really hearing what you're saying too about, like, that's what we want them to be doing. Just, you know, think, think about it, have it in, in the syllabus or the curriculum. And I'm hearing, I'm trying to balance, right? Because I hear from teachers like, duh, duh, we're already doing that. And I hear the administration that we have a process for, you know, if, if there's a concern that that's not happening, how to, how to handle it. So again, I just, reflecting back on where, where, where I was in the fall when this policy started and looking at all of the other items, I'm like, yes, 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 yes. And then this D just feels, again, kind of out of place, and I think makes it a less, a less effective policy instead of more effective. But I think others, it's really good discussion again. So thanks, everyone.
Yeah, my, my comment on this, if I, if I may. I, I generally believe that the intent and the purpose of that paragraph remains relevant to some of the work that needs to take place in the district. But I also hear, like, when I think about the conversations we've had since November, both with the board in 2022 and the new members in 2023, this is the place where the questions and the concerns continue to circle around. And, you know, by, when I started this, I remember, and I think I've repeated it since, what I want to provide is a set of standards and a board-backed policy that kind of articulates a point of view on some specific areas. This is one of them, but there are others that are very, very important. And that idea of having a board-backed policy, I think, is a hard time holding it when we've got potentially three members of the board here that are continuing to be uneasy with the language. And, and so it undermines a little bit of the confidence that I want this to go forward with. And so I hear your concerns, and I've worked purposefully and very diligently with everyone here at the table to really be thoughtful about this. So your question about, is this policy stronger without that language? I don't know. But if there is a motion to move forward without that, I would support it.
I guess I'm just curious as to if it's more of a, duh, we're already doing this situation, what's the hesitation of keeping it in?
Yeah, that's a great question, Melissa, and I appreciate it. When, through the conversations I had invite by certain, as, as we noted, right, not a representative sample of the almost 900 employees in our district and the many wonderful educators that we have, it was almost the way that it felt a little, I think, incongruent with a piece of our strategic framework around radical trust, having radical trust in others, in self and others. And then also that, that I think, at least the way it's worded, and I, I talked to Kyle about this, I, I had several paragraphs going to see if there was a way to word it differently, because it's, the way we have it right now, it's almost like these things are, are mutually exclusive. Like we say, while we recognize the importance of diverse points of view and the thoughtful examination and nurturing critical thinking, district employees are to refrain from interjecting content or concepts that are unrelated to instructional goals into the development, as described in the course syllabus, into the development of the curriculum or lesson plans, that it feels like, yes, but, instead of yes, and. Does that make sense? Like, and so, again, I, I agree with Kyle's point that this is an important area, you know, and one that I hear consensus in the board in, and that we want to dig deeper and we want to have a better understanding. And I personally would love to have more dialogue with employees or educators if we're developing a policy that is more, you know, curriculum-focused or focused at a, at a, at a certain portion of our staff than what we have now. Because again, admittedly, it's, it's a very small. And so, you know, if-
An example of five.
Yeah, right. And we each know, right, different people. That's, that's one of the things, when I called him, I'm like, you know a lot of people. You have a lot of relationships of people that work in the district. And so, but kind of going along with our broader goals around community engagement, not just with the public, but the two-way dialogue. If it, if it were something that might have a, have a, an impact more directly affecting them, I definitely want to be more proactive in communicating it and create maybe more formal opportunities to hear from the affected audience, like teachers. Maybe we have a listening session where a couple of us go to buildings or, you know, things like that before we-
Lisa, are you comfortable giving any feedback?
Regarding the policy?
Well, Section D specifically, I mean, you know, is sort of the, the steerhead of the educational branch. Do you, it, it's okay if you're not comfortable commenting. It's, sorry to put you on the spot, but I, I'm just, I, once, you know, we, we've all spoken with teachers, educators, and have gotten a big variety of feedback. You know, as, as someone who would be obviously pretty involved in designing those curriculums and things, from the part that you design, do you see it as problematic?
I think I choose not to comment on that.
That's okay. That's okay. Sorry to put you on the spot. It wasn't intentional. It was curious.
I, I think one of the words that, in that one, that I see, problematic's not the right word, but unrelated. I, I think there's a lot of things that can be related, right? And I think that's where the question becomes, is how does this potentially relate to an instructional goal or to a learning activity? And I think that's where people come into disagreement, right? I mean, the overt stuff is easy. Like, that doesn't, that, that doesn't, why are we doing that, right? I think the harder ones are nuanced when you start to get into different things that people disagree that it's not related, where reasonable people could say, that's not related, but another person could say that that is related. I think, to me, again, this, like I said before, this, these are things that we should be doing, right? If we can't articulate why something is a part of our, our learning design, and that's, that's a fundamental issue that we need to work with. I, I do think ultimately, if something like this goes through, somebody's going to have to be the judge and jury of what's related and what's unrelated in some way, shape, or form. And that, you know, I mean- It'd be, it'd be the administration, but yeah. Sure, sure. I'm just saying, it, which again, will not, potentially may not satisfy people, which again, no, we have a process we go through. We should be able to articulate why it's related or why it's not unrelated. I just, I think, to me, of all of that, I think sticking's not the right word, but I think that's where the topic of discussion comes up of, is it related or is it not related? A lot of times it's kind of like this, because when it's, when it's not, it's pretty easy. And I think that's probably why so much attention is focused there. It raises the most questions, raises the most concerns. I mean, I would want to continue to work with the administration, you know, over the coming months, I guess, to try to figure out, you know, what guidelines might look like stronger, you know, strengthened within the district. Anyway. I've said my part. I, I think this is, honestly, I just, I've, we've had, this is one of those topics when other boards and other districts have tried to manage it, it, it creates a storm. And, and I recognize that, and I recognized it when writing it in the first place, and tried to be very thoughtful about saying what I really meant and what it really was intended to do. But it is, it's a difficult, I, I get the nuance that's taking place in people's minds here. And in any case. And I told you, not to, not to be applauded, like, the discussion the boards had around this on the last two things, you could make a training tape for school boards to say, this is how you communicate and this is how you go about things when there's potentially disagreement. You can be passionate about it, but I think the board is, not that you care, I work for you guys, but what the board has done and be able to have a conversation around this and, and continue to work is, is the way that we should be interacting in the district and our community. It's a great modeling. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's kind of where I was going. I'm very proud of the conversations, whether it's this or others, actually. Over the, my time on the board, we've had very thoughtful individuals on a lot of complicated issues, and this is no, this isn't just another example. So.
Yeah.
I'll stand back for the comments.
Well, I'm like, as I'm processing this more and listening and I'm remembering, like, you know, when I was campaigning, which doesn't seem that long ago, kind of miss those days where you were with just the people a lot more, not behind a computer researching stuff and learning stuff. But anyway, like, I feel, as I'm knocking on doors and talking to people, talking to people, like, I probably, well, I talked to teachers and parents, but there are more parents than teachers, you know, ratio-wise. What I heard from parents and families is that they want the teachers to teach the academic standards, the course information. And obviously, teachers play a great role and influence and, you know, like inspiring students and stuff like that, and that's good. But they, families and parents want the teachers to teach the content, and they want to be able to parent those, those things that may be unrelated, that may be outside of the parameters of, this is a course on, I don't know, history of sports or algebra or whatever. So, yeah. So I was just like, as I'm listening, reminded of like, you know, I think a lot of the people I talked to would say like, they would appreciate a parameter like this, you know, a guideline. Something to consider.
That definitely makes sense. I heard, I heard a lot about that. Kyle and I, we were so, so jazzed to be on the Community Engagement Committee our first year, because that's what we, that's what, when you're coming from all of those discussions with the community, that's exactly what we talked about too. So I think, you know, I just want to be clear too, that it, you know, I, I'd like to propose removing it for the purposes of this policy, but I completely agree that this is something that will, is a priority for the board and that we'll continue to talk about. And not just around the curriculum or kind of the pieces that affect our educators, but the parent engagement and communication. That was another huge need that we heard, at least in, in, you know, being, you maybe you heard similar, but just that parent desire to have a better understanding of, how do I know what they're going to be taught so it feels more proactive and less reactive? And I know Jason talked to, you know, a little bit at the work session about how they try to be thoughtful and proactive in those ways, but really a bigger piece around parent engagement too, and that communication and what that looks like. And, because we know that there's a lot of variability, right, that, around that right now too, you know, from teacher to teacher and building to building. And so, that, I, I just want to emphasize that that's a shared goal, for sure, and something that, that I, I'm sure that we'll keep talking about as we, as we keep going. So I don't, I don't want it to be misconstrued that I disagree that it's important or something that we hear is a need or an area to continue to work on.
I think the recommendation you're making is that could we take it into a different, a different venue and continue the work?
Right.
Okay.
Not, not do the work or not address it.
Correct.
Yep.
Are there any other comments or questions? Would you like to make a motion?
I, I would like to make a motion, and thanks again, everybody, for the helpful discussion. I would like to make a motion to adopt policy 1021 as written with the exclusion of Item D.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion to pass policy 1021 excluding the paragraph D? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes with a five to nothing vote. Thank you very much. The last item on our agenda is board remarks. So we'll start with our students. Emma?
Um, yeah, I just appreciate the conversations going on, going off of what Mr. Berg said. Like, this is like, it's helpful to hear conversations. It's, you know, it's like one of those things where you have controversies, how do you go about it? So, yeah, I appreciate everybody's input, and that's all I have.
So I'd like to say, big appreciation for, I know I've said this before, but the amount of interest and well-being that you all have for the student body. Everything that you do is in theory to make, have us learn more, have more fun in schools, things like that. And I wanted to say, like, Mr. Berg, when you go over sports and cabaret and things like that and all the events, whether we win or lose, you always have so much excitement in your reports and things like that. So it means a lot from a student, and I can imagine other students feel the same way, when these people who don't even know us are just so excited about what we're doing and involved in everything that we do. So thank you all for that.
So I am very excited. The marching band theme was announced the last night. So exciting. We're going to be doing Jack in the Beanstalk. That's public knowledge now, specifically labeled as Jack. So we're all really excited to see how that evolves. And to anyone else that may have interest in joining the FFA alumni group, we did have enough members this weekend to go ahead and proceed with chartering of the alumni organization. So if anyone else has additional shared interests, feel free to reach out to me and I can get you in contact as well.
Okay. Well, I'll just lead by saying, thanks again to fellow board members. I have such a tremendous amount of respect for our new members and our student school board members, you know, diving in. I know other board members, there's MSBA hosts, like coffee and chat for members throughout the state. And, and there are a lot of school board members who are struggling, who are really having, you know, a difficult time personally with why they're there and how to feel like they're doing something productive and meaningful for the, for the learners in their district, because there's either so much contention or disagreement, or people can't just respect each other's, you know, differences or find a way to communicate effectively and still like the person, even if you maybe disagree with, you know, what, what their thought is on, on something. And so I just am really grateful for all of you and the opportunity to get to know you guys even more. And, and for Kyle, as chair, I just think that one of the things we've, we've talked about before, and so this is a repeat, but as a chair, making space for all voices to be heard and shared. And, and I just appreciate that that's always a thoughtful, you know, intention behind the way that our meetings are run and because we want to hear from all the voices at the table. Everybody brings a unique perspective, and, and I think that that just is one of the things that makes us a really, you know, effective and, and impactful team for our district. So thanks for that. A shout out to the Riverview Multi-Age Showcase, because I got to go to that, and that was super fun. So they also picked historical figures and got to do research projects on it, and it was just really a cool experience, seeing their space filled with parents and learners and, you know, children begging to be brought home early. My child told me everyone was going home early, and then he, he was like one of two. So I fell for that. Not again. Aiken Road PTP also had their dance last Saturday, which was really cool. So they had that from six to eight, and just love the continued, like, fun things and the passion of our parent-teacher partnerships volunteers, because, A, being a parent of young kids, it's hard to find family-friendly things- Because A, being a parent of young kids, it's hard to find family-friendly things to do, especially in the winter in Minnesota. And so just really cool that they continue to offer neat things right here in our community and with the benefit of supporting our schools. And then finally, just a note to the organizers of the blood drive and everyone who's blood donors. You know, they always talk about the lives that you save, but just so you know, I'm one of them. I would not be here without the generosity of blood donors. And so a very personal thank you to everyone who donates and organizes that. I'm here because of blood donors, so that's everything I have tonight.
Well, we're grateful for that. All right. Melissa?
I'm just going to echo everything that everyone else basically said, that I do appreciate the conversation even when the subjects are contentious and I, I do appreciate the different perspectives. And I just look forward to continuing to have more discussions around how we can make this better.
Thanks.
Okay, I agree with everything that's been said, but Jason, I wanted to thank you for your legislation updates. I don't know why I geek out about these things, but I like to track it, even though I get a little frustrated that it's like, still in committee, okay. Where's that one? Oh, it's still in committee. Anyway, so, but I appreciate that, those updates that we get on Friday nights. And just congratulations to all of our Farmington High School teams and activities, wrapping up their winter seasons. I'm just proud of learners who, because I recognize that takes a step of faith for them to be like, I'm going to join the debate team for the first time ever and I'm a junior or a senior and I've never done this before. I don't know, you know, that's a like, a step of faith for them is to do something new. And so it's great, a great opportunity. And then I had a blast at cabaret, really glad I went and so thankful for all those high schoolers and fourth, fifth, and sixth graders who entertained me for the evening.
All right, thank you. Jason mentioned it's national, is it national or just state? I don't, it's, it's School Board Appreciation Week from somebody declared. And, and I, you know, Hannah's right, you know, the MSBA has, has phone calls and I've, I've met various board members through MSBA and, and other things over the, the past couple of years. And, and you're not kidding, there is, there are, there are boards that are, that are very functional and there's, even when things are a little tough, and then there's a lot of, a lot of different situations that are tough to watch and tough to hear about. And I, I've never been more proud to be part of a, a group than, than this in 2022 and 2021 and, and still now with, with new board members. I think you guys are adding the same class and thorough and, you know, the due diligence and the representation of our community. And, and I, again, I'm just always just proud to be part of this group. And, and so thank you for your dedication and the communication. And look, this is the first, we're, we're two months into the year and we've had an issue that we didn't all agree on. And, and I do, I've, I've heard it from several people in the community that actually do watch these tapes. And, and, and they, they, they make that, that similar comment to Jason, that, that this is a really good example of good, good government and the way government should work and respect different points of view and come to hopefully a better answer. Probably not a perfect answer, but, but hopefully a better answer and that's what we're here for. I, I also, you know, thank you to the student representatives, we're here for you and, and everyone. But, you know, coming up through the, through the grades behind you, that's, that's always the, the foremost purpose for, you know, the school board. And, and anyway, so that's enough, I'm just very grateful to, to be on this group. I also just want to thank real quickly Principal Boluson, Principal Biken, and Principal Nelson. I've, over the past few weeks, I've made a point of getting to a couple of our facilities and I've had some really great conversations about the unique differences at FES in Meadowview and Dodge Middle School. My kids go at, go to Dodge, so I kind of, I kind of get it, but it's different when you step in from a board perspective. And I've had some really great conversation about the, the behavioral and, and learning challenges that are facing our students coming back from the, from the pandemic. And also really used that as a, as an opportunity to start informing my own opinions about some work that I know we're going to be doing in the coming months around, you know, how we measure academic performance and communicate that value back to the district. And, and so those conversations are very valuable to me. And so thank you to the, the three of you in particular for hosting me and listening to my questions and, and all of that. So that, that's all I've got for tonight. That's the last, I'm the last item on our agenda, so if I could get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:44. Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by DeWilde, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.